I've called meeting harder than I did speaking last. I was asking everyone to please hand at this time. Kevin Feig is not going to be with us, so I'm replacing him. And Richard Denton is going to lead us in prayer. Father, let us pray to the Lord.
Father, we thank you for this hour. We thank you for this without food, baby. Ask you right now to give us what it is and we give a little trust back to Denton. Father, we bless your name, so your name will always be blessed. So most of all, Father, we thank you for the blessing you have brought upon us today. And how you take care of this present time. We thank you now for this meeting and prayer right now that you go out according to your will. And just to be asking, bless you now. Jesus, may my prayers, amen.
Amen. I pray to the Lord, the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and welcome to the Lord's workshop. And I don't need to remind you, at workshop, we're going both. And we know that decision, we discuss. And listen, folks, I want to go to number three on the agenda, which is to recognize Tom Conley from the Department of Labor City, who recently has updated county assets survey. Tom, you gonna go on to have that?
Okay.
You wanna get a little background? You wanna get a little background on that? You can do it, you can do it there. This is my phone.
Okay. So I would say back in November, probably Mr. Conley came to see me and advised that we had not updated our asset surveys, which is our, our property insurance since 2014. And I'm not sure-
Before that.
Before that, okay. And I'm not sure that the board received an update when that asset survey was completed. There seems to be some, some uncertainty about that. So he agreed to have all of our assets, everything updated, and it appears to give us reviews, whether it's good, bad, or ugly. And the good thing out of all this is we did identify at least one building that for some reason was not included on the survey, it needs to be. So we just wanted to deliver the information to the board and after this, we'll ask for some direction from the board. And there will be some of the buildings that we'll need to go ahead and add prior to seeing that your workshop.
Thanks, folks. The, I don't know if it's press, but the update interruption to what else we're going to talk about. Tom, alright.
So this is the report that is the result of doing the asset survey. The reason we do an asset survey is because if you leave your property policy alone year after year, well, for one, you'll build things or acquire things and then you won't get them added to your policy. And then when you go to file a claim, there won't be any coverage. So someone needs to stay on top of getting buildings added. And the second part of that is keeping them properly insured to current construction, reconstruction costs. If year after year after year goes by, your buildings are gonna, you know, construction costs generally keep rising. If you're not, I think, our policy doesn't have an inflation guard like Homer's policy does, where it bumps up a few percent every year. So two years go by, have the attention to building values fall behind, and then you can get into a problem with not carrying proper insurance. And the claim's not going to be from any page if it's what they call a co-insure. So we did one of these, we call it, we don't use the word appraisal, because we're not, we're not doing a property appraisal. This is to determine replacement cost of your asset. And we did one back in, we try to do every five years. Did one back in 2014, and it was presented to your prior administrator. And I don't know that it ever, that any action was ever taken. And I say that because now, here we are, five years later, and we've done another one for you. And I hope that we'll get some action on this one, because otherwise, we're in that scenario where things are falling behind, okay?
Excuse me, Tom, can you explain to the board what the meaning of the co-insure penalty? Because I had that misleading.
Right. There's two types of ways to set up your property policy. Ideally, you have what's called blanket slash agreed amount. And the benefit of having that kind of policy is that, let's say you have a building that's a million dollar, what it would take to replace it, which you only headed on the policy at seven hundred thousand, let's say, and then that's burned down. If it takes more than that seven hundred, actually takes a million, we would have to pay the full million, or a million two or there, right, that cost. That's definitely the kind of policy you want to have, because it takes the burden off of your shoulders to make sure everything is insured exactly right, and we're putting on us to make sure we're collecting proper premium, you know, covering it properly. But we can't write that kind of policy until we know we've got everything insured to adequate value. So what you have currently is a co-insure policy, which-
Yeah.
Can you make it a little clearer?
Um, I mean, explain the house on my child one of the-
I see those words, and by the cops, that's all you need.
Now, you have a printer that you can move? Yeah, but I'll-
The thing about this report is it's so much better to look at online. When you print it, it doesn't excel what it spreads out over.
It's very, it's very hard to read when you print it out. But I'll, we'll try to do it if you want.
What about, does it make them screenable?
It is full on the computer, it's done. So-
Uh-huh. Oh, yeah, we can see it over in there.
Is that better?
It's not like having to do a lot of scrolling, um, coming in and out or something, I think.
Ah, excuse my camera, I'm just about to quit showing you.
I know you want to see it bigger, but I, I need to see more of the screen than more just show you what I'm trying to do. But your first location on your schedule, let me finish that description first. You have right now a policy with co-insure. So if you, and thinking about this a lot, because Hurricane Michael, you know, the four boats were still playing up over there. And a couple of accountants over there have not made the move yet to blanket policies. I'm thinking specifically of Gadsden and Liberty, I think, top two, or less or three. Gadsden County, for example, they got a horse arena that was like eight hundred thousand dollars. They only had it on policy for two hundred thousand, and it had about a hundred thousand and anything, stuff like that. So we're all onto that co-insure penalty. They were only carrying two hundred, they should have been carrying eight hundred, so they're only in fourth, what they should have been carrying, we can only carry four to their names. So had they done their asset survey and gotten up to date and increased its value, they would have managed to pay for the full one. Well, that's a good example of how a co-insure penalty works, if you're not keeping up with the policy. And so-
It takes months, a couple times, and you can't afford it, the full coverage, just because you have to take co-insure part.
Yeah, and I'm not telling you you have to insure everything that you have, but if you're going to insure me, it needs to return to the right miles, because no one's happy when, when we're coming out saying we can't pay a full thing. You're not happy, because you know, you need the full value. But if you're carrying some insurance on one location, I think you have to carry the right miles, and you can have the right insurance policy.
Can we pick and choose which one? I want to go to the higher full coverage, Tom.
But Jack, you could pick and choose which things to insure at all. Which part is part two of your, of the conversations? There are several pretty large county locations that are not currently insured. I think you, you know, actually bullets, they're like, it's historic, it's kind of, so many have come here, would've been a mess of these locations if we're not insured at all. But we don't typically, uh, beat up members about, you know, like, if you're a little bit lower, your property's not going to get into a co-insure, come up with something stupid, or like that horse arena, or quarter of what they should be carrying. But like the first location, how did you make it bigger? Because I want to scroll back out to your, your whole claim. Yeah. So just as an example, your first location that I insured was the jail.
I see it, tell you for me, it's down in the jail. That building was built there in eighty-nine, I believe it was. But you insurance it for the replacement cost, if you had to replace it.
Right. Correct. So the way this report works, you, I know you don't need to see a picture of the jail, but that's part of the report. So all these items on there, if you're looking through this and you don't know what that, you can't figure out what location they're talking about. This modular storage showing, let's see what that is.
So, Tom, if it says new, that means that it is not currently insured?
Right.
Okay. So the word new means it's not insured at all?
The jail wasn't?
No.
Well, no, the jail is scheduled, it just needs to be bought up, dealt with, that's not a good deal, it's fine. Because the eight million is really more of a ten million dollar relief.
I can't read the description, well, the asset is-
Uh-
Heard everything. Still, we're still-
There's just some more asset notes, so if you hover over it, if you were, if it's not, and you want to explain all that, that's fencing. You know, the guys, the guys want to go out and do this, they're charged with pointing out, everything is not attached to something else, and finding values, but it doesn't mean we're saying you gotta insure the fencing out there, but it's technically not insured. You've got a little bit of coverage, it's a freebie, if you have a building at that location. But because there's so much fence, it's really almost seventy thousand dollars worth fencing, you're not going to lose all that fence at once unless you have a hurricane, it's just-
I'm having some difficulty looking at slides.
Yeah.
From my notes, it's cornered out some big uninsured items that we got.
Okay. Well, this looks, the, an address on file is all this, oh, oh, one, that's the first address on file, left to jail, and then this vehicle, the building, that's insured. All these other things are not technically spelled out as wanting specific coverage on them. So for example, if you had a claim on a garage building here, we would say, that's not all the potential for-
Separate building torn?
I'm not fully-
Well, that's hardly true.
I'm looking at a picture of the-
No, sir, this is a sale location.
Uh, so like, uh, seven, nine dollars or, the premium bridge location is all the way over here to right, so that will help you decide if you want to cool with ensuring that or not. But my point for now is, at the jail, you've got two things, which you got all eight to ten other things that are not currently insured. Okay, next location, airport. You've got one, two, three, four, five things on file. And then there's fencing, modular building, store building, equipment building, generator, you know, and all these various things. Let's make it see the whole thing, it's hard for me to keep going back and forth. I know we identified a couple of things in our conversation that were, to answer your question.
Well, I believe-
Well, this is how it's weighed out, is by address on file.
As a sports complex, the concession buildings are not insured.
I think, actually, there was not a single thing out there insured, right? Let me get down there to that.
There were several things that were not insured.
Well, some of yours is-
So some of them are as a sports complex, um-
This must be a year of-
Yes.
Four, four, five.
Right. So the lights are insured, some, one of the concession, one or two of the concession buildings are insured, but the basketball courts are not insured, the tennis courts are not insured, at, at least one restroom building is not insured, the paged area embrace is not covered, um, and it kind of goes on and on. So everything in yellow, that's all of the sports complex that is not insured.
So to answer an example-
I have a question. Sorry. I have a question. Okay, well, individually insuring little pieces of property of the town, uh, the sports complex is very important in that it's liability covering the entire sports complex, or, or are we not covering the, um-
Business properties.
Well, I think, this is really important, because the, um, the training stand is not covered. Oh, we got a gap in not being insured for liability, somebody put some calls there. Okay, all right. The other thing, the other question I have is this, uh, with, um, individual insurance on each little thing, then it'd be me that we also need to find things that are no longer there, they have on the list, that we're getting, that we're insuring that somebody needs to be insured. Because, um, I mean, we can't get a blanket policy on all our properties in Taylor County instead of having, you know, we insure this one thing, insure this one thing, because that's a nightmare.
The, the reason not to cover things, like you might say, why don't we just say sports complex is thirty million dollars? Well, then, think about when you have a hurricane claim, it's a percentage of your coverage. So a three percent deductible and five percent deductible. So if you're saying five percent of three million dollars, that's a very large deductible. Much better to say three percent of a thousand than three percent of three million, sure enough. That's the reason we break it all out.
How about a deductible on the claim?
Well, that's a different name, storm, when it comes to the percentage of the-
Oh, man.
Well, I mean, just property policy in Florida, is that why?
I, it is a bit, but, you know, that's, that's weird, I understand that, but I mean, it's really, really, um, you know, our taxpayers paying this year after year after year, having to keep up with, with each improvement or each depletion, uh, so we're covering, that's a lot of work, uh, for our staff, you know, the credit manager, you know? And don't get me wrong, um, you know, fact's been, uh, very helpful to us, um, over the years. I'm not complaining about that, but it's just a lot of work. Um, and I just don't want my client to get caught in a, um, you know, check account. That's not covered.
Well, I'm trying to help alleviate that. Right now, it's very piecemeal, you've got a pump here, and there, you have a lot of these, uh-
Let me interrupt you, Tom, now I have a question regarding the survey. If we continue to the process of ten million, I'll put a leader at eight dollars.
That wasn't, that wasn't the exception?
That's not our intent, I don't have eight dollars tonight. Could you staff go over this, come back to the board, have another workshop, say, these are the priority items, we'll convince them, here's what we need to do, board. We've got these properties that are not insured, we need to add them to us. We've got, we now own some properties, just cut those off. Can you predict this a little bit?
Sure, and, and this, now, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do have some coverage, if there's a fence as a sports complex that gets hit by cars, there is a dollar value limit that tax will pay now, because it's attached to the sports complex, correct?
Right.
It's twenty-five-
Uh, let me correct you by saying it's not fact, it's like, you-
I'm sorry, as a matter of-
Right. If you, the way it's possible, if you have a building at a, at an address on file, and you have coverage from, you don't have to, you can cover all your small items up to twenty-five thousand per item, or per box. So that'll, if you cover the concession stand, like you asked, what's something that's, something large that's not insured, you have concession restroom or out there, five hundred dollars in our building, it's not currently insured. Like you said, like added at the priority items, then you get twenty-five thousand for fences and bleachers and lights and corridors for, for your minor claims. And then I'll just pick on anything that you run.
Some of them are doing things like- Supervising election building, is there?
I think we're off end of that.
It's a big one.
Well, the one, the biggest one is-
Supervising election, it's on there. Cordex?
Yes.
Cordex. The empty community center, that was a big one that was, uh-
Is not insured.
The Shea Road Community?
No, the, we have the community center, it's not insured.
That's county owned?
Yes.
Well, that's sorrel, five. You sorrel side?
I think it's on the list.
Well, that's Shea Road Community, that's on there. What about when you have something like old cap, home, you just got a new generator stood out there, is that insured?
We, well, it should be to a certain extent, but we try to be very careful about making sure that we add things to the policies. But the reason for our, for Tom to come tonight is to bring it to the board's attention that we think we have some opportunities that we need to address. We, we just, well, I said, Dr. February, that we need to have our asset survey and take a look at this, and we need to get some sense of, do we want to have a blanket policy? And how much will that cost? And so to bring everything up to, the remainder of the fiscal year out of May second, it would be nineteen thousand dollars. And then-
A little bit less now, because that was on the-
One, I got that.
Yes.
Say that again, now, we were talking to nineteen thousand, you think, where we need to be?
Yes, sir. But we made, the plan is for Danielle and I to sit down and go line by line through this survey. And, and really get a sense of what we need to add now, and, and then we can consider, depending on the cost, through, throughout the basing process, if we want to consider a blanket policy.
I'd like to see the numbers.
Yes.
Because I was, I was, I want to say that from an insurance man, but I was surprised that that's a figure, nineteen thousand, that'd be increased.
Well, that's not for the blanket policy, that's just a great-
I thought me.
Right, right.
Get by with that.
Yes.
All right. Is it, all right, the board, if we instruct staff, the one that worked with Danielle, and, and, and go through all of this, and then it's there? Budget, hearing is coming up, that's all time, the center, the branch side?
I'm fine with that.
Anyhow, that's it?
I'd love to see it, you know, I'm, I'm, and see-
I, I, I mean, you go with it.
And the comparison from a blanket policy to a very individual policy.
Right.
Because thinking that, seeing that the center is not insured, and it's scary.
It's scary, because that name is Burn, and-
And what, I haven't been involved in it.
Well, we need to remember, as individual board members, we've got a big share of responsibility here, and one of those is we need to look out what the fatter of the county, you know, that's our number one responsibility. And it's going to look awful embarrassing on the front page of the newspaper. Uh, the empty community center in Burns, county, if you have any insurance.
And that's not hard for me to fathom, that that hasn't been insured. I don't know if something's happened with that. I mean, that's hard for me to fathom, that there's, we don't have insurance. But we need to delve into all that, and then basically just come down to asking the board to give us some guidance of how much risk you want to carry, or if you want to pay an additional premium for a blanket policy, where basically, I mean, it covers just about everything, correct? And I think we threw some numbers around last week.
If you wanted, I'm not telling you that you should do this, but all of the little things, you just, where everything on there, every, I don't know, six thousand, when you're-
I see.
Yes.
About everything, every little fence, every little light, you know, you've got to figure out what you're comfortable paying for yourself, and what you want us to pay for for you.
Why don't we go ahead and do the community center, get that on the paperwork, I mean, I don't know.
We'll, we'll.
Yeah, I don't know, let's take, I mean, you do it.
We can, we can get it added, I mean, all we have to do is send it to Lee City, right?
I mean, you know, well, you can handle that, without the board having to wait for-
Yes, sir, and that's something Danielle and I will do, at house. But this is more, we, we need some direction moving forward. This is really just about risk. How much risk is the board comfortable taking? It could be that you want to save anything that's valued under fifty thousand dollars, a foreign number out of the year. We don't necessarily need to cover, you know, to pay the premium on that, um-
You can look at increasing your deductible at the level right now, so if you, if you wouldn't file a claim for a valid, then you can increase that deductible, pay more.
All right, is that all right? If I have to say, I'm all in. Okay, any other questions?
It needs to be done, it's going to stop.
Especially the area owner.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
My mom, my mom, go take care of that, maybe that, too.
The new generator is, is broke out the hole, don't forget that new addition there.
The new generator.
Yeah, we, Danielle and I worked together to make sure add, are, are added, and she has a copy of the purchase order. I think that just through the years, maybe, you know, this wasn't communicated to mine , I don't know. This is more about to make sure that, you know, we are updated and moving forward, we have a good plan for, this is how even for us.
Okay, board, any other questions, Tom, before we go to the next outfit? Okay? I think, yeah, that's, I think, any questions, come on, please. Well, that's, I see that our plan is different here. You're not always in a business or not, but I think it should be appropriate. If I understand, maybe y'all's in your class today, that you, that you get to come up next. But John, you get it, we'll come together, or separately?
Yeah, well, uh-
We'll give you what things like-
I was getting down yesterday, and we took some pictures of the brace, uh, you know-
Come on up to the car, boy.
My boy, he's, he's-
Do it, what you got?
He's a good, he's a good fatter. We just fell up, he's-
When they call you the fatter?
Yeah, we kind of, a little John, but I don't need to bring it, that's it.
That's John in the boat, that's him.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, he, uh, this sort of medium kind of, it's supposed to look at two twenty-five, it is, it is a throughout, but, uh, the first page there, you can see, basically, the bridge is in pretty good shape, except for the walls, uh, in the bottom. Your bridge area, is that right? And, uh, if you look on the second page here, I don't have a moment, but it's just in the same order. Those are ten by twelve timbers holding the deck up, and, uh, there runs eight across, and on one end, and then eight more of them on the other end. What you're looking at in the second page, is that's a center, kind of, and it looks like it's funny, it's lighting there, and then that's the cracks from the, the, uh, the deck, you know, top, there are three by six, uh, for the deck. On the third page, you can see that that side, uh, looks pretty good on that side of third page, this is here. And then-
Yeah, the whole, uh, cable, cable.
That is cable. Yeah, on, yeah, on fourth page, that, that's what the closure looks like, you sort of have a table around it, and it runs out to a dent man, which is probably a cross tire or, or fire pole or something, buried into the-
The rock concrete, right?
Yeah, and-
A, a table in the previous section, they run that.
That's the problem. So the next page there, you can see, see what happened. It rusted out.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, in the, the timbers is pretty good shape, what, what do you think, Tom, John?
The structure seems relatively deep. What I see there is the cable, of course, we're looking at these steel cables.
Uh-huh.
Have rusted and broken away, and what that has done is, the bulkhead anchor system has been that ruined there. There's nothing that bridges together. There's no hold on that bridge together.
Who?
All the support system.
What's the left mix?
The wall. Creative accretion anchor.
Yes.
It's, it's actually, uh, decreasing pressure, not adding pressure, decreasing pressure. So with these cables rusted now, it's called that wall, which helps support that wall. The bulkhead, the bulkhead is still there.
The roof is. It's flexible rather than the tear out.
I, I am not an engineer, I'm not a real engineer, but what I recommend is that we get back to it on, on the cost of the bridge. The reason why I say repair is people need an evacuation route out of it. And when you come into the entry, you're in a little left, where the bridge is in the back, that's your height. So if they get out, they have to actually go to the negative side of the swell point. What it boils down to is since they, they way out, I'm pretty sure the bridge is going to be, it needs to be, you know, as well.
In your opinion, the youth commission is out there, you think we need, uh, to go outside of our engineering department, get an assessment of how they.
I think that we need to have three different things. Just like if you're being adopted privately, you have three different things, and only like favoring one or the other. I think we need to have somebody come and go and find out what it's going to cost. We need three different, three different separate entities, and we need three different companies.
You know, these are, uh, don't come, don't cooperate.
I agree on that. But if it's, uh, a great authority, so.
I mean, it's very important that we don't have a safety issue there, we are. And my preference, if they were looking at another big timber, it's a solid thing, is if you come out of there, I think the cost should be a better. I'm, and I'm not, I'm not an engineer. And we might, by the time you face the consultant, you pay the repair, you might be better off to take the option, start it and put it in with, and take the bridge out and replace it with another wooden bridge. But if you don't know that, let's see, you have to work on it.
Right.
LaWanna, advise us what, what to do.
Well, I. I mean, we're, we're taking our guidance from the D O T. And they have been performing assessments on the bridge for some time and have noted the deteriorating condition. And I think the concern is not what you see on the surface, but what's going on underneath the water. And my understanding from the bid, the bridge was rebuilt, is that we can only set the pilings down so deep because it's a rock. And my understanding from staff was that if we rebuild the bridge like it's built now, then we would just have to build it again and never fix it in years. Because we can't get the pilings deep enough. So, um, and I, I mean, we could look at some costs for investments to repair.
I think it is, I'd like to hear how the lady from D O T, and then sit in the chair. I, maybe come if you will, and explain us what their engineering position is on, can you repair this bridge immediately? Because if we wait for D O T to fund the concrete, one four sixteen dollar bridge, that's wait seven years, that's too long for us to wait. So I'm going to do what I can, try to make it safe for everybody to get out of there and use this bridge. Like wooden bridge, truck bridge, repair the one we stopped, you get seven years out of it, not asking off on nothing. It's not fair enough to do another good bridge.
And I believe we got a cost estimate to do that, that the concern is, is that if we do that now, then we would, we would remove our chances of getting D O T funding for a time.
I've heard information to fund it, that this would not affect our ability to, um.
Once it's funded, once it's.
Yeah, you talk to, let me just call on the. Yeah, come on up. You talk to Danielle or D O T.
I have heard you.
We have talked.
Yeah, I have a little.
We took several times with Melissa Morgan and she had a piece on the.
Melissa Morgan?
Melissa Morgan is a part of our lawmakers in the rural areas. And she has spoken to me all over, um, several times, and with Lloyd Jackson, who was like, on this page, and said, I asked if we could just stop by? And maybe talk with the committee or something, and he said, sure, he's just really a wonderful person, and wants to be here to help them. And, um, so she had Richard Hammond, who's the engineer over there, he's a doctor, and Lloyd Morgan, and we have program on hand, and John's without my business, he's just a professional engineer, and he's a instructor, and they also, you know, he and his brother, called, repeated those timbers, he's now pointed out, and not going to be very much with him. That you can't find Morgan like that anymore, um, beginning with that stuff being chewed away early, and I was, and that's in whenever that was built. Those are huge timbers underneath there. But they're well aware of that, and she has pictures, just like our pictures, and we have more pictures than she does, and we shared two many copies of those, and also of our pictures, we just over there. And she said that, um, that in their view, that the top of the bridge, the, the big top deck, is, is fine. I mean, they didn't do down the water or anything, it, it's, it's good. And the main thing that they wanted, is just like I was telling her, when we first, after the storm in the sea tree, it hit up everything that's been happening, that we didn't have insurance back then, but we just did the bullet, and then we replaced the people. It was a little severe, not big out there. And, uh, it's a first experience I had with getting, you know, the weight that you, and that was what we're holding that bulwark hat on each side. They have those thick stone cables, and what they did, and I, they came in early, aren't they going to be, oh, these timbers down there are, are something, it was heavy. And then they attached to those cables, so for the, well, all they did is an office board spin, that had timber walking away, and not raining. But anyway, that's, that's, that is what they wanted. And there is no reason they can't go with that bridge. Then that went again, and you could, you get a trench, and you put, you know, you know, um, iron railings, or you put something that will take a long time to block. And, and then by that time, she said this, she said, maybe that big scuffle, well, my heart I can't say, don't ask all, at all. And she even said, um, you know, I said, well, you know, she knows to not go off to my test by, and if I think something's wrong, and she said, that can be helpful, we can talk to these two officers, they're watching. You can go and help us, that's for hell. What they want to do is that we're not competing, so we are not competing with.
We'll give you a couple more minutes, we've got a long distance.
Okay. So, so we're not competing with, with the big bridges. What she's trying to work out is so that they have a pool of smaller bridges that are competing against each other. But advanced, it's going to be, we know it's going to be five years, it will be five years after it's funded. She told me that they can notice, and y'all know all about, that I heard today, the, um, they have a buddy store, that she said, so I'll be accounting, you can be busy managing, or maybe once a week, sometimes they did this, my mom does, and this, um, small thing, I'll be showing around, where, and, and you just have to go in, do work, and then you can be part of the later.
They just did a bridge just from a back end, and, uh.
Our, our.
We, our motor or something.
Yeah, they, they were, they were, yeah.
But she, she, she is wonderful, and I really would, uh, if, you know, advise you, that it would be a good thing, like, I think she just stood up, just giving us this thing. And also want to thank, um, Sean for coming down.
Yeah, thank you, Sean.
Because that was so important to lay eyes on what you, it, it did, uh, within.
All right, that's, that's, uh, I spent, I spent an hour down there, I couldn't even read from one end to the other. Sean, we're going to look for you for, please, yes, I'm going to, 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 the last of our leads will be sitting on the bridge. And we've got, get Mr. Dudley on board.
Can I meet some of the.
We, we, we use dock program all the time, we, you know, but I know that, that you could do the work, it gets, it works later. So that may be an avenue we have to look at, but protect the money, however we do it, yeah.
That was it, it's one more thing.
One more thing.
Okay, to say that part, I was trying to think, you know, you're just explaining things, you're not still working on the inside, so to say the part, we could think of saying, I was thinking, maybe a plan, well, the engineer just began to tend to, and he said, look, you can do that, and tell something, that's something, and you just feel, it's like you're living in a house, and you do it one border at a time, like they did that out there in the mean. Anyway, somehow they, under, in four points, it's four points. You just put those under the bridge, and that whole get in place while they're working on the, that sidewalk. And when we did, when we did all the things, the seventy foot shot, um, a lot of things, seventy feet long down there, we did all of that, there's the board, all the time, all of it. Well, I think that the steel wall back in ninety-three was something like five thousand dollars, we used to, and, you know, with the cement, it was, it cracked, and then the, the civilian was like twenty five. We, it doesn't have the cost of fortune, all they need to do is have it fixed properly with good people, they're not particularly, thank you, thank you guys so much, thank you.
All right, I think we're ready for us.
I think.
For, uh, you've spoken a long time, friends, I'm glad that you're making it. But this is, this is, but, but.
Can I reach to you from an email I received?
Yes.
From Mr. Dudley, just to clarify.
All right.
Um, if Mrs. Morgan clarified that until the bridge is funded and not listed candidate, we should not remove the bridge if we hope the housing fund is replacing. We can make minor temporary repairs to prevent further or associated damage, but nothing to the point that has a major impact on the structural integrity of the bridge, as that aspect makes up sixty percent of the current ranking criteria, but would only hurt its funding chances in the long run. Further, and this is the important part, part of our concern is that if we disturb the structure in an attempt to make repairs, we run the risk of getting into more costs than anticipated, if say the abutment wall were to fail completely, from D O T, um, excavation or equipment loading. So the concern is, is if we, from what I understand, was that if there's an attempt made to repair the bridge, that we get into an issue where we further damaged the bridge, and then until the bridge is funded, that would preclude our chances of getting funded, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
It does, you're alive with the risk.
Yes, sir, I thought of our.
So I'll be trying to make something better, and something okay in them. So this is to suit the board of late. Why, and is, is, is it all right, if we can go in there and make some temporary repairs?
We can.
Yeah, unless we want catastrophic, if that happens, that, that's not going to affect, they have to come on down the line.
And, until, in the, in the period until it's funding, right now it's a candidate. So from now until it's funded, we can make minor repairs, this is, and from what I understand from what Missy now, what that was said, the concern is, is that the repairs that need to be made as far as the abutment wall, that if we start, if we try to repair, that will get into more of an issue, and possibly ruin our chances at funding from D O T, but if the board decides to replace the bridge, that's a new point.
Okay.
I look at it pretty closely, but no, it, it can be fixed.
I, I think it's it.
I mean, cable is up, they do, when they go back, put stainless cables, they got dirt behind that steel wall right there back, pulling, pulling back, putting stainless cables on, pulling it down, and then fill it, climb on back in behind it, I mean, it's, 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 it'll support the vehicle, I mean, it'll support the vehicle right now.
That's, that's, I've got, we got a print, I think, I think it's doable. Thank you, LaWanna. If y'all can, thanks for that, you mentioned.
Thanks, thank you.
Y'all have a good trip.
Thank you.
Now, we're back in, when you.
Right.
We're on number four, the board, it's got, the board's department, testing about the work program, this is item four. LaWanna, you're D O T.
See if I can explain this in a way so I don't confuse all of this. Um, back in January, I believe, we submitted our top three priorities for the D O T's five-year work program, and that's for year twenty twenty thirty. And we received communication back from D O T, I can have supplies, the board with a copy of the email, that our number one priority was not chosen as a project. That our number two priority, which is McDaniel Road, actually was vetted out and was recommended, um, to be put on the priority list. Or actually to be funded. Now, the, the issue is, D O T will not make the.
Oh.
Well, they, we would have to, we have to change our list, basically, to receive the funding. So the way they explained it to me was that McDaniel Road ranked, and, um, in the top ten out of about fifty projects submitted.
Yes, and Frank Warrior Road is, I read this reference, they're not able to fund it at that time.
Because it did not make that top ten code. So it's not, but it's, the wording is a little misleading, it's not because of the cost of the project, from what Ms. Stewart explained to me, it's because it, it did not vet out, when you compare the crash data, the road conditions, the field conditions, and all the criteria that they use. So the only project that we submitted that they would agree to fund is McDaniel Road, which means in order to receive the funding, we have to change the order of the priority list. Now, if we, if you agree to do that, and McDan, and move McDaniel Road to number one, then next year, Frank Warrior Road can be, can be our number one.
So I, I mean, one for three miles, if McDaniel Road did not do, yeah, the other roads, just, you know, I thought they weren't going to fund it because of six mile.
Not according to what she said today, she said that, I mean, they have a limited amount of funding.
Yeah.
They probably would not fund all six miles, but they, if, if the Frank Warrior project had ranked higher, they would have agreed to repair, to do, to fund part of it. And then we would either just have part of that road repaid, or we would come up with a different.
But I'm agreeing that since we cannot fund your number one project prior, which was, which is county likely to re-prioritize, and then do the McDaniel Road.
Because they.
That's their question to us.
Correct, because they will only fund the number one priority, so if we change.
Yeah. I want to look at McDaniel Road. And it's a real good road compared to industrial drive, or Frank Warrior Road, it's why I don't very say. Now, I, I, the only thing they said, the placement was the crash data was what made it different.
Right, okay.
And, and the road leading into it, but.
God, God.
I can't see it.
I, I can't see that.
You can't see it, uh, uh, we have to do it the same, in, in sunshine with, and stay on the page, we need to, uh, we need to do it that way, you know, and then to put it, McDaniel Road, I just, it, it's got, it only have a old end, it's, it's not that road, that's not a bad road, it's not a big track road.
It doesn't have near the traffic road, it doesn't.
The drive is, is a major thing, but evidently it, it must have been built several years before.
For them to think it's right, number one priority.
Well, one of the big factors from what they told me today was the crash data.
Well, McDaniel.
On McDaniel, there were four crashes that were not alcohol related.
What's wrong with McDaniel, it's got one parent.
I, they, from, from what D O T told me this afternoon, there were four crashes in five years, Frank Warrior had one in five years, and Industrial had three. So that was.
They don't want to lose the money, so we have to do, McDaniel, of course, would be all right with me, but I, you know, I'm not. We don't want to lose the money, so we have to do, McDaniel, of course, will be all right with me, but I, you know, I'm not, I'm gonna do the work first. What you want to do, Jim?
Well, I don't want to take the chance of losing the funding for all of them, I feel like not changing.
Let's go ahead and change it, man, and then that's good, does Spring Warrior really live at that number one?
Well, for next year, we could ask for Spring Warrior to be number one, Industrial number two, and then take the, maybe number three, if that's what you wish to do. Well.
Is this, is this an emergency?
We have, they have to have an answer this week, and typically.
It's planned an emergency.
Typically, it's, it's the staff thing, so it's all we're invited.
At this time.
Sounds like a pretty good handwork, Daniel, right?
Yeah, we can make our media play. But it's decided it's an emergency, because you got to do it within a period of time, so why don't y'all make a motion? I'll make a motion, I'll say, now, I'm making a motion by Mr. Dent, seconded by Mr. Murphy, that we can declare a state of emergency to act on one item to answer the question for Florida Department of Transportation, where we re-prioritize and make County Road sixty nine eight the number one priority road on the list. And then our minister, uh, communicate that, that's a motion, all right, make that motion, all right, that motion, that's a stop.
I want to say one thing before we hand it up on that, when a school bus is going down Spring Warrior Road, and they meet a, 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 a boat coming back from the boat ramp, the school bus has run off the road, uh, or the boat has run off the road, or if they meet a lawsuit with the school bus, that's the call wide out, there are scared children going to get hurt, school bus that runs off down there road down. And I want, I want y'all, in the future, remember that when, when time comes to work on Spring Warrior Road, it is a mare.
It is a mare.
Kind of a great, takes the school buses and children, and I'm just, and.
Yeah.
But they, they didn't take that into consideration, with their study, all they do is how many wrecks were on the road, how many people got hurt.
Any others to say?
They're doing it.
All fair and open say aye, 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 when you oppose, say no, the motion carries, and we'll go back into work, so.
Maybe they'll go back and say that's due to McDaniel Road.
All right.
Now, that's due to.
Now, we declared a state of emergency, we did that, and we said to the reading, went, now, after we've done that, that's what we're going on, then we need to, make a motion, County Road sixty nine, sixty nine eight the number one priority, I move, motion by Dent, seconded by Mr. Murphy, all fair and open say aye. Aye. Aye, when you oppose, say no, the motion carries, so sixty nine eight the number one priority, and now we can go back to the, to the workshop, Dick.
Thank y'all.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, we got it done, took two motions, thanks for your help, I'm about to get where we're going there, or let's. But we got to the end of the sun, we're on number five, Mr. Murphy wants to talk about littering.
Yes, sir, I want to bring for showing the patient the bottom of the trash. In the past month, I traveled around all four corners of this town, and I never seen this town in this big of that, and that's pretty shame, I felt shame. Lil' One and I discussed a couple measures here earlier, what are our options, where can we go, and we discussed measure of, uh, attempting contact, can, cool, kill, pure. Sorry, contact, uh, seven pure that we came, and all of our, look, there's a gap between when they finish loading and when they begin loading, um, five and a half, five and a half months, is there about that?
Uh, this was from late October, November till May.
We have a, we have a gap, so much trash is not being, in, in our road.
That's because when we're in motion, we don't have a load.
Oh, sure, now, not load, but is it, is it trash, now, we discussed measure of, uh, adjusting this contract, and, uh, opposing him to find out what is the cost for him to provide a service during that gap year, just trash picking, now, I, I know the county can't really afford it, creating a work crew dedicated to it, or, or not at that age yet, but in the future, we're gonna have to have that, I counted on Highway fifty one from Sheen Hatchie, twenty seven, and then Sheen Hatchie Beach Road, up to twenty seven, and a hundred and twenty miles, we got most of these roads, trash picking. And those are people who want to return, for our first, trash, and if we try, we could, seriously, look at how, or.
Well, it wouldn't hurt to ask, you know, what would it cost for that thermal and sockle, or for this trash pickup truck, I'm concerned, yeah.
Isn't that part of his contract that, um, where he picks up the garbage before he moves?
Uh, yes, yes, he did.
It is, but, but the problem is, you gotta have him pick it up on a mile of road, and if he come back, he can pick up empty much garbage, it's such a hard job.
But the more often you pick it up, it does.
We'll pick it up, and I have this here.
After five months, it does get pretty bad.
Sure, if they create that, they're picking that stuff.
Uh, yeah, they, now, they kind of been very responsive when I call them and ask them to pick up trash on certain roads, but it's, I, you know, I typically have to call when it gets too bad.
So reach in the first pool, if you want to, and get it out of there from, bring it back to the board, and find out if that's speed running through the county.
Wait, wait, direct, put this on the agenda at the next meeting, boards should come, they asked our minister to contact Care Two about extra load sockle or trash pickup truck.
I think I have that information, and I'll.
Do you have, or did that, uh, board of, do an action, you know, you know, run a meeting, run an workshop meeting?
This was explored last year, when we were looking at options to address this problem, and, um, asked, we did, from what I understand, Mr. Fuel was asked, you know, to give us a ballpark idea about what it would cost to just have a countywide trash pick up, and.
On roadway.
And that would be on the, on the, on the major collector road that he already mowed or took trash, um, and he gave us an estimate, and I don't know if it's changed since then, but I would think that prior to our budget workshop, that's information the staff can gather and present it to the board during our budget workshop, if you.
Well, that would be the time we need to do, because we got a point back, I was already taking some of the summer, so.
Yeah, that's the thing, of when you have a, you're gonna clean that water, and all, easily, we don't have to necessarily have the grass in there.
All right, we do that for trash, that will come, all right, anything else on trash, littering, good morning, anything on the agenda? Or is it gonna wait till we buddy say, or you'll bring it from there?
Yeah.
No. All right, number five, the board should discuss the master project, Chris, you got that, in your, uh, pack, please.
See, I think it's, it's a long seat.
Yeah, I'm.
My phone is in the house, it's in here, I just thought it is, I have more.
Uh, uh.
I don't have one more.
I need one, I know, I thought, I need one there. So, but it is a, a longer seat, I left me. Well, I'm gonna have to talk to the public names, yeah, that's.
Is everybody in the room?
Nah. Derek, you ready?
Uh-huh. It's still in front of the hand.
Well, I have it, right in front of you, no.
I need one, you have yours, I have mine.
I need one.
So I'm happy to say that in the last six months, we've come from a four page list to a two page list.
Good, I think it's broken.
Yes, sir, and I'll be happy to go line by line, or if you just want this for your estimation, whatever.
There's every way to look at it, I don't think, uh, I don't know, well, there it is, uh. I'm happy to report, we've, I have finished the road, concrete building, embarrassing blue, and I don't know a lot about block things, but I gave this guy a look, he's a skilled block man, he was not there today, but I could stress that.
But the, uh, purpose of this list is, is supposed to be the board informed of some of the small proj, some of the small projects from the larger projects, so you're aware of the progress that we're making, and as we come to projects, you can take them off the list, so, um, and we have it separated into, under construction, small projects, under which starts a conceptual and road.
Okay, I don't think I have any questions, you know, and I think we're making a lot of progress along that, that. Now, things like the solar farm, that's just a concept right now.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and we've got the land, and we've got the trees, so, so, we just wait for an opportunity to present that.
Well, I think the purpose of, of projects like that being on the list is to help keep it on our radar, um, and it's something that we review with, with staff at, you know, every couple of weeks typically, and we talk through, um, within our staff meeting, and really try to get everyone's input, and, like I said, keep it on the radar, because I think one of the issues that I recall is that, um, sometimes the board felt like we were kicking the can down the road.
Right.
By talking about things, and this is really just for accountability, I would say, and to keep the board in camp.
Going to do, do any, to try to market this, airport and solar, I mean, is there some presentation? I've been somebody who came here, and they look for me to go free other updates, which we don't quite have that.
Right.
Somebody might need to get me two minutes, but I have a pain market.
There is a consultant attorney firm in South Am, that I talked to one time, they actually, uh, contact everybody that builds, they, they did the legal part to make sure if somebody does get one, it's done correctly, and you got the right coverage, and you get the right money for the.
Right, and deal.
And the lease is, and the lease is just there, it's in a way that you don't get ripped off on, yeah, and, uh, and I found that part, it's, it's gonna be what that root is, I actually does that. I don't know the name of him, I got the first word at the house, and I, I get.
Your best sound, I want to have a.
I get that to you, and then you might contact them and, and, and see what, where they're at, what that kind of stuff, I know there's a lot of airports got it, and, and it, it makes money for airports, and it's not good, it takes them, takes you off the tax, or like, they're giving up money out of the lease to, uh, that everything needs to be done at airports, what I, what I think.
I know our airport manager is keeping that on his radar, and it seems that that's something that we can discuss with the C P D A, and, and ask them, you know, to, to help.
He's, he's been talking to people here and there about it, that's, and that.
There's one coming to Taylor County now, you know.
Sir?
There one coming to Taylor County now, they're working on one, I, I talked with Duke Energy today.
Lil' One, but explain to the board the talking on the second page, what?
Talking.
On the office renovation, where the judge, that's the one beautiful in office that you have leased to somebody else, so that glass is gone, or they won't split glass. He wants to put the guy in, get a sudden finish, oh, wait no. Yeah, they're probably soon as come talking about, so I think that before the board makes a decision, you need to be talking to person you guys leased to.
And it could be that, um, this original project was placed on our list because I think the judge was told that there was funding available, and there might have been a miscommunication about the purpose of that funding, so I believe that that, that's, uh. We may could, but I have it on the list because we're still waiting to see if we receive any funding for courthouse security upgrade, and, um, have, have projects kind of morphed into that, I might just need to rename it, being courthouse security upgrade.
Okay, thank you, Jim, and let me go a little faster, I think we're ready to go, go on to our, on our air, our airport, right, we lost work there, it's, they did, they did a, had a whole list thing that they did for, to get, and to get right direction, so I'm, I'm a little fast on. All right, number seven, the board should discuss bookman fees, I read what our tax collector's put together there, and part of the T base, I don't have any outside, spent a lot of time, and more time to do than in bookcases, I think the Fox enough bill about it, and they won't doubt it, we can survive it.
That's what we keep running into, and, and I think, I believe that when the board explored this last year, we got ahead of ourselves, possibly without realizing that we do have to work through F W C, and so, um, a commissioner has asked, has actually asked us this to be placed on the agenda to, to explore whether or not the board wishes to look at that again, um, because the fee is, is low, um, and it's really the pleasure of the board, um, you know, maybe something to keep in mind during courses.
Well, if you put, put all that, pack it together here and reread it, the, uh, problem is, for example, is very clear, and I don't want to dedicate that much effort of time, you ever try to answer their questions?
And I believe that's why they're getting.
Why are you charging on, on the, 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 they add there, out of county, that's, we'll pay more for our stickers, with our books right on our, in account, they want to, why, why are you doing that? You know, I, I, why are you doing this to generate revenue, so I, I just have my own issue, you know, for sure.
And, you know, and that's all, it's the other thing, um, I'm sorry.
Yeah, number, uh.
You can have mine, then.
Yeah, mine, we want them all week, yeah, one, market, number seven, you don't want to.
And that was just to demonstrate what, what our tax collector came up against, now, it could be that if the board wishes to increase the low rent fee for everyone, not just out of county residents, then it would not be as difficult, but we still have to go through the exercise.
We've got to justify what you need your community for, what already.
Right.
You know, what, what, what process do you have, the roadmap that you need to generate revenue for? So, just, I did that for eighty five dollars, that's what I thought I'm gonna, by the way, it was a lot of it.
And Sandy, do you have any idea, any rest, the amount of revenue that has possibly been generated from riding, like, eight, and we can go back and do it, though, because we are.
So. A lot of times, they need stickers on there, and those people go to wherever they go, and, um, bringing up stopping sessions that they, they have, it's like a picture of what they were pumping, but lately, we've had some issues in that, so we can get that information, how many is actually saved, how many did just miss, or whatever.
I'm just wondering if that, you know, if that has increased our revenue collection, um, by, by having enforcement, and, and if that kind of resolves some of the issues that we, so like we have, with people not even paying them by dollars.
I'm sure.
Well, since we can bear by those, those conflicts, because all of them get over there through Danielle, when the money gets there, so if somebody says they're paying it, we can go back and pull it, you know, we found some that's on the two dollars in there, whatever they want, drop it back, if you need it, well, two that, you get it, proper minimum five dollars, only you take it.
All right, uh, I didn't think, this, now, I, I, I'm not gonna do that, I just see anybody collecting, you put it in their envelope, take it in the box, honor it, you know, is that, is that really the law of the county, or is it just?
It's, it's pretty much the honor system, or it becomes a dish honor system, we get caught, basically. So, um, I know when we have our boat rent attendance during the summer, um, down at the beaches, I think it helps maybe increase the collection.
Well, true, yeah.
Yeah.
It makes a lot of difference. Well, I better do, I'll call it a trick, I sell watermelon on the side of the road on a, you know, all the tricks, I increase your collection. All these parking old trucks out there.
I feel a bar.
Out there, leaving there all day, you'll collect, dog. So I have, put a man in there, you can get water, that's probably good. I found in my honey box, I found oak leaves, textbooks, uh, private notes, some prints. I own two fire watermelons today. And they signed some lady's name, you know. Ladies, uh, uh, it's the same for the truck. Hey, all right, been quiet tonight.
Pretty sad, what y'all do, you got some tough to see.
Tough to see.
My tough, you got them.
Locks, did I say for you?
Got some to do. All work to do.
All work to do. All right, we don't need it, back to motion, you're done, you're finished. That's it, Jim?
Thank y'all. Y'all got good.
Sorry, I'm at a church, somebody blew it up.